Good evening and welcome to the panel board of directors meeting for Wednesday, June 15th. All right, we will start, first thing on our agenda is the pledge of allegiance and you please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
See no presentation. All right, we will go right to any public comments. Okay, one at a time, please. Okay. All right. Now we'll move down to our action items, financial. Okay, our treasures report. What was corrected on this?
They had voided checks. If you look down the number at the bottom, the $16 one got changed because of some, a stale check that got voided.
Oh, the $61 check?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Does anyone have any questions on? All right. Next, the gym floor RFP. All right. Okay. Kevin, you want to talk to us about that?
Yeah. The bids on the gym floor came in and you guys got a copy of that from?
Yes.
So, uh, the ones that came showed up and did the bidding was Cameron's, Bennington House of Tile and WCW Carpet. Um, with WCW being the lowest bid at $9,964.50. And that was the good news because that was way under what we had originally been looking at.
Exactly.
The question was brought up with the age of the tile, could there be asbestos in the tile or the glue? So Dave Mack came Tuesday, took a sample of the tile. We won't know for about a week to a week and a half. He did say if it's in the tile, it's about $10,000 to remove it. If it's in the glue, it's about $20,000 to remove it. His suggestion was it very well may not be in either. It's right at the, it's 12 inch tile, so that's good, 9 inch tile is a definite given. But 12 inch, you know, could go either way and the glue could go either way. And the age of the gym, I believe it was done in 71, he said that could, you know, you're right there where it could be either way.
Right.
His thing was is if it's in the glue, they can actually, uh, talk to who we decide on have doing it and they can slim coat it and cover it and then he doesn't have to come in and spend all that extra money to special oil that they win with to clean that off of there. So I guess as soon as we find out, then we can find out which way is the cheapest to have it removed. If that's, I mean, obviously $20,000 would be a lot of money just for removal. Um, $10,000 would still kind of put us under what we originally had thought we were gonna. So I mean, my thing is, and the estimates were, some included the removal if there was no asbestos and some they gave a figure that would be extra. So if there was asbestos and we had to have, uh, the other company remove it, you would back $1,200 out of WCW's $10,000, $9,900. Because he include, in that $9,900 included a removal if there's no, if it tests no asbestos. But if it tests, then you'd take that $1,200 off of that $9,900. So that still makes them pretty much the lowest.
So Kevin, if they go, say they find asbestos and they put the skim coat and they go over it, do you still have the same amount of, that's the word I'm looking for?
Durability here.
Durability for the years?
Yeah, actually, that was one of the reasons he suggested that because the, and one of the contractors that bid was worried, he said if there is, he said they clean it with an oil and it's really tough to get this to stick good afterwards, he said we've been, and Dave Mack that's testing said the same thing. And that's why he suggested the slim coat because it's gonna stay, it's like, it's gonna make it stick much, much better. And they're gonna slim coat a lot of it anyways because of the low spots. So there may not be a huge difference in them slim coating it as opposed to. So the biggest thing is if, is just finding out next week. I would say it would probably be middle to the end of next week when we get the test results back and finding out if it's in either. If it's not, that would be true, obviously, the best thing. If it's in the tile, it's not quite as bad because it's, but if it's in that, then we'll decide, we'll have to make a call and find out what it would, what, how much more it would be from the tile company too.
So if we, if we go ahead and we take our lowest bidder, but we, we probably should put a hold on that
Exactly.
to, we get the final figures.
Right. I would say like if you approve the lowest bidder here, that we approve it with finding out what, you know, what we find out next week and then, um.
There's a contingent on that.
Right. I mean, obviously, if, if there's nothing, we just go ahead and do it. If there is, then I'll contact you or whatever and just figure out exactly what, what we want to do with it.
I'm just wondering about the warranty for like, say a tile breaks or something, will they come back and replace it or?
Talked to most of these and most of our material and labor is a year, which generally if you're gonna have a problem with a tile floor, you're gonna have a problem right away.
Do they give you extras?
Yes. I'll make sure they do so that, you know, you, I mean, like what we did it up there, we got a box or two extras so that, you know, later on down the road, you're not trying to.
Right, trying to match.
Right. Exactly. So, you know, I would just tell them.
Well, sometimes they could be like 10 year warranties, five year warranty.
Yeah, I asked them, there's, especially on the, the, um, labor defects, um, I think was a five year on the tile, but it basically is a, is a year.
Wear and tear.
Yeah. I mean, this floor is, was put in 71.
Right.
And probably gonna have the same type of thing. I mean, it's, it's, and it's a through tile, which means the specs in it, you know, the, whatever, whether it be gray or whatever, go right straight through the tile. So it's not like in a year's time, the top's gonna wear off and so it's a good, it's a good quality tile that the specs are, what they call a through tile.
I think we're more, more concerned with the wear and tear versus the color.
Right. No, exactly. Exactly. And all the colors would be determined. I think we'd probably stay with a light color like we got with the gray or whatever spec in it with every one of the colors because I, color pretty much is no different than price.
Which is the board's pleasure.
Well, just to kind of fill you in, last week, or last month, you put a motion out there for him to spend $99,000 to do certain projects. So that number has changed because this price went from $33,000 down to $9,000.
Right.
So.
Twenty, $26,000.
Yeah. Twenty six thousand. Um, so what I did, I just did up a fast form here. Um, time, timing will make a difference when you make a decision here because when he finds out, there's not gonna be a meeting in July. So for him to do the project in the summer, he may need authorization tonight to spend up to maybe $20,000 if there is asbestos so that the project can be done. Do you reckon you agree on that?
Right. And then if there is in the glue and it's gonna be more than that, then we'll, I mean, I'll contact somebody before.
Emergency meeting or something to say, okay, what do you want to do at that point?
So if there's asbestos and you decide to remove it, obviously, they have to block off. Would that affect the summer rec program or anything in any way?
I don't believe so. I think they'll just shut the doors and, and he said it's about a week.
Okay.
Took them to remove it. And that was the other thing that I, I actually told the contractors that each bid and spoke to him about, we'll have to get together and make sure that when he can come in and do it, they accept their time so they can come right in after that and, you know, so it's not sitting there for three weeks before they come in. So we'll coordinate the tearing up with, be great if it come back, no asbestos and then this one company's gonna come in and just do everything and have it done.
So the recommendation on the motion then is what dollar amount up to? Just authorize the spend up to what amount on the floor?
Well, if you, okay, if you look at the projects that have been done in 2006, I think you're approving all those projects. So your new total here would be $76,000. And then a motion to, I mean, you want to correct the motion you made last month to say, okay, change the motion, do these projects at $76,000, $678 at the most. And then a motion for $20,000 for him to do the asbestos removal or working with the glue situation. If it's more than, up to $20,000. Which still brings you in line with the $99,000 that was the motion last week, but it more, it clarifies each project better now.
Right. So.
So I make a motion that we accept carpet warehouse and for Kevin to move along and that he can spend up to $20,000 extra for asbestos. Does that sound good?
Well, it's, it's up to $20,000.
Up to, yeah.
Up to.
Up to $20,000.
Yes.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Uh, motion being second, is there any questions on it? Hearing none? Okay. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. It's unanimous. Let's just hope.
Keep our fingers crossed. That would be great.
Okay. So, um, might as well just stay right there and we'll move right on to our windows, window bid.
Okay. So the windows, uh, we contacted several and JTG Construction showed up for the tour and CL Whites. And CL Whites are the only ones that submitted a bid. I think probably because of the size of the window project. So CL Whites bid, uh, came in at 45,214, $45,214. Now, with talking with them, if they split it into two summers, okay, because of the size of the project, because of everything else that's going on, we got the phones going in, it's gonna be a quick summer here and we got four or five room changes. If they split it into two, this year would be 24,806. That's doing two classrooms, which we have four classrooms. The window in the computer room, the two windows in the nurses' room and one window in the boiler room, which is actually two windows, but doing one of them. So basically it'd be over half that he's doing. The reason he splitting it that way is to get 20 windows in because that's where he gets a little better price. If he, his pricing is 10 to 20, 10, uh, zero to 10, 10 to 20. And 10 to 20 is his best price. Well, there's eight windows in each classroom, so that's 32. And then two in the nurses, 34, the one in the computer, 35, and two in the boiler room, 37 windows.
I think I misunderstood. I think it was just three classrooms.
It's four. Four classrooms.
So what, if he does it that way because of the time, is that gonna change next year?
What, what, the only thing it'll change, okay, is next year he'll have, I think it's 17 windows left. He said if absolutely he couldn't get anybody else was doing, you know, like, he said if we hadn't, if he had known a month ago for sure, he could have put part of our order in with another order for another place he's doing because he got seven windows for another place. So he wouldn't have had to have a full 20 from us. More than likely next year, he can do the same thing. He's gonna have 17 windows for us. So if he gets three windows for somebody else, he can get the same pricing. The labor, the window price will not change. It'd be the absolute same. It would come out to the estimate he gave us. Right. The worst case scenario is if he had no other windows to order for some odd reason, it would be about $1,000 difference in the total project. Because it's, so it's not like, it's not a huge amount and it very well would work out where it's the same. I mean, I can't picture him not, right. Exactly. Right. It would, so it's, it's a good chance it'll be exactly the same as the estimate even breaking it in two years. But at the very worst, it would be $1,000 difference.
Yeah, because, I mean hypothetically, you could order them all and store them somewhere.
We talked about that. It's, and it's where to store them because there's so many.
Yeah.
And all you gotta do is have one get broke in storage and you're probably gonna spend more than.
So are you recommending to split it in half because it's too busy here?
I would.
He's a lot of 90s.
Um, just because there's, I haven't, with the phones, what's gonna happen with that? Because they're obviously gonna be taking ceiling tiles and all that stuff. And the same thing with the strobe lights, they're gonna be taking tiles out to run, ceiling tiles to run all their wiring. There's gonna be a lot going on all summer long. And yet, nobody's starting until after the first of July, so you got seven, six and a half weeks.
I think it makes sense if you don't wanna rush it and have stakes.
Exactly. And then all the, you know, I mean, school's gonna open whether it's ready or not, but it's, you know, you want, you want it ready. And, you know, those rooms, you can't go in until after they're done with the windows because obviously you can't do walls, you can't do lights, you can't do anything cleaning wise until they're done. And downstairs is tied up the month of July with the summer program. So, I mean, it's, it will be a busy summer for sure.
It's the board's pleasure.
A motion to accept the bid.
Second. Okay. With the understanding that we're going to only do half of it and the bid actually is 24,800.
Yeah, we're doing a little over half, a little over half is what we're doing.
I was gonna say, I, I don't see any problem and I could double check on it, but accept the bid for the full amount with the understanding that it's gonna be done this year and next year since there was only one bid.
I just wanna make sure, right? I don't wanna be okay in the 45 and then not somewhere along the line have it be said that that's only for half. You know what I'm saying? All right.
So the motion is for the full amount with the understanding?
That'll be done in two years.
It'll take two years to complete the project. And that should cover it. All right. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor or any, any other questions about it? No? All right. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. It's unanimous. All right. You're gonna have a busy summer.
It's gonna be. It'll go by quick.
Here we go. Um, just to clean up a few things, last month, there was the phone that was overspent by $900. There is actually more than the 43 or whatever, the amount of money that's in that line item. So the full phone system can come out of that line without any transfer of money. There was 7,000 additional monies in there for building equipment. So that's all taken care of.
All right.
Um, talking with Kevin this morning about the slide, unfortunately, there's no way that he can get it delivered before the end of the year. But he has found in a buildings repair line that he thinks he could take the $4,000 out of for next year. Um, so it would be a motion to, I mean, I don't even think he need a motion. He would be spending it out of that line item for, in next year's budget. He can put it in the purchase order now, have it ordered.
What line was it?
It's a, what was that?
Building repairs.
Yeah, it was a separate, there's two building repairs and one is for a larger amount and one is for a smaller. And we didn't really use much out of the smaller amount.
It would be under the 26,20 account, 430, so.
Okay. All right. Yeah. I don't think we need a motion.
Right.
All right. All right. So we're all set?
One, last thing, just to end of the year transfer.
Yes.
Because there are two lines that take care of the capital improvements. One is $30,000 for capital improvements and then there's a $30,000 for cap, monies that you earmarked that would be put into the capital reserve. Um, the amount that was spent this year was $73,138. So because it was $10,000 or $13,000 over the amount that, of the $60,000, I need a motion from you to move from the capital reserve fund, $13,138 to cover the, to all the capital expenditures that were done in fiscal year 16.
What's this? $13,138, 30. Okay. Can I make a motion to move it?
So moved. Did you make the motion?
No, I don't. Chair can't make the motion. And I can recommend. Go for it.
I'll make the motion.
So the motion is to move the $13,138?
30. From the capital?
Capital reserve.
Reserve fund.
Into the general fund.
Into the general fund.
To cover the capital improvement.
For the summer.
For 2016.
Fiscal year 16. Yes.
Okay.
Second?
That's it.
Anybody second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
All right. Okay. Okay. I mean, you know, my mind is trying to wrap around these figures here and I'm, all right. So we're all set with that?
All set?
We're all set with that.
Thanks, Kevin. All righty.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Oh, my gosh, it's hot in here.
All right. So we move down to the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second? Any second? Any questions on the consent agenda?
Just to add to that, the 150 was not on the consent agenda, so it just needs to be added to the minutes for the.
What am I adding now?
We're adding the $150 to pay for stewards for the ice cream social that we had at the wonderful time. Is there any other discussion on the? Hearing none? All those in favor of the consent agenda adding the 150? Okay. It's unanimous. All right. Now we're gonna move down to policies. This one is to adopt 5,200 fundraising. I have a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Motion made and seconded. Is there any questions on it? Hearing none? All those in favor of adopting 5,200 signify by raising your hand. Yes. All right. Uh, 6,400 optimum class size and this one is to warn. Make a motion.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All right. Motion been made and seconded. Is there any questions on the optimum class size? Hearing none? All those in favor of warning it, please signify by raising your hand. It's unanimous. The last one is 10,20 and this one is also to adopt visits to schools. Okay?
So motion.
I need a second?
I have a question about that. Is it, is it now the right time?
Well, we need a second.
I'll second.
Okay. Motion remains second and now we can discuss it.
Um, on, uh, number three, visit by community members and school board members, permission? Is that, is that the proper term? Do we need permission to visit the school as elected officials?
Well, I know that.
I understand the professional courtesy, you know? I mean, obviously, I want you to show up, but if I called and said, you know, Todd, that I wanted to stop in and see what's going on and he said, well, now's not a good time because there's testing going on and such. I understand that.
I know. I really wasn't particularly fond of the word permission, but I understand the meaning of what it represents. Because in the past, we, we've had a couple of board members that would come in and they would antagonize the teachers. The principal, half the time, didn't even know that the, that the board member was here. And I got more phone calls about that. And to me, it was wrong because, you know, just because you're a board member, that doesn't give you special permission to come in, it's not your job to run the school. It's the principals. It's the board's job to make sure the school is run properly, but not to run the school. I don't know if there's any other word that they could use. I, I mean, after I looked at it, I thought, well, you know, it's, it just covers the, the purpose of having the, the, the policy.
I agree that the word is, sounds strong.
Yeah.
To a board member. But it is exactly for what like Cindy outlined. Particularly on a testing day that, and so that the principal can have that discretion to say, this isn't a good day and, you know. But I think Todd certainly would work with any board member who wanted to come in. So, yeah, I agree that it is, it sounds stronger than the intent.
Okay. And we are very fortunate to have someone like that.
Oh, absolutely.
Very good. All right. So all those in favor signify by raising your hand. It's unanimous to adopt it. All right. Now we'll move down to facilities. If we have any, do we have any?
I think we do.
I think that basically covered it for the summer. All right. A superintendent's report?
Just a couple of items. Uh, the Act 46 expansion of their study committee. I have no applications to bring you from Powell. And intent.
It was sent out to the community, so.
And on our website. And the intent was that, you know, we'd be able to appoint at your June meeting. So what I've told the other committees to do, to authorize the chair, if somebody comes forward between now and July 12th, because that is the meeting with the consultant. So if you can, you know, beat the bushes and find somebody and we'll say it to the panel people watching, if you want to volunteer, the application is on the SVSU website. If they fill it out and send it to us, then I will bring it to, and Todd's got one right now.
Yeah. And we'll have one in the office.
As an ensure, that way they could participate. And at the August meeting, then you would, the full board would vote and ratify that. So, so that we don't close the door and miss the opportunity to have an additional, a community member from Shasbury. So if the board would allow you to act on their behalf and then ratify that at the August meeting.
Okay. My question is, if for some reason we don't get a volunteer, may we appoint someone from our board?
Can someone from the board volunteer?
I was gonna say, we, we are residents of Powell.
I know that was asked by the SU committee, but it throws the balance off if it's a board member. So what?
But if they come in as a resident.
But the conversation I had with AOE today is it should be a community member. You know, how you define that?
I'm just saying hypothetically, if nobody from the community, which we're hoping somebody from the community will volunteer to be on Act 46. But, um, plan B would be if no one comes by, I'm thinking of our new board member.
Yeah. I know the answer quickly for me was no, because then you would have two board members there and the other would have one board member and you're authorized to vote there. So I would strongly, I'm not gonna say that it can't happen, but I would strongly hope and urge that we find somebody that, that, that could do it so that we keep the balance of the, you know, we avoid the criticism that Powell has two board members and Woodford has one.
We'll work it out.
Yeah.
We'll work it out.
All right.
Versus going there with no one. We'll, we'll find somebody.
All right. And they are open meetings anyway, so you're always, others are welcome.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
All right. And, um, we haven't announced this publicly to the SU meeting, so, but next week we will be announcing that we, uh, so we'll announce the name then. We have made an offer to a candidate to be the director of finance and operations and we'll have that nomination at the SU meeting Wednesday night. So out of respect to that board, I'll wait till then, but you should know that that progress has been made. We hope that they'll start July.
Okay. Very good.
And have a nice summer.
Yes. Yes. And to you too.
Yeah. But to, to your board, those Act 46 meetings are open meetings, so you're always welcome to come in.
Okay. That's all you have to offer? That's good.
Yeah.
That is good. Yes.
But I, I feel like I haven't been here while I've been sending Donner and I just, well, I'll.
And you know, that's okay.
Yeah. I understand. You like her more than me.
I mean, don't take that wrong. I mean, we really like you here, but we know that you're being stretched thin and, you know.
And I keep telling Emma, you stop calling meetings before your meeting.
Yes.
It puts pressure. And when it's 7 o'clock, I can make it.
Yeah. Not 5:30.
Right.
I know. All right. Now we'll go, well, it's up to you, Todd.
All right. Well, I only have a few words as well. I just wanna say, um, we really have had a very successful school year and I'd like to thank, um, students, staff, parents, school board, administration from central office. And I'm very proud of our efforts. Um, we had a very successful.
I'd like to thank you too.
Thank you.
Yes.
Very successful last day of school, including the ice cream social. And I think you're gonna talk about that here in a minute. But, um, just looking at the kids and looking at the community members that were here, But just looking at the kids and looking at the community members that were here, the whole day was very, very enjoyable. And for a last day to be so enjoyable like that and to see the kids, we had the steeple cats here. We had, you know, that first day performance in the morning with folk music, and the afternoon talent show, and the barbecue, and the ice cream social was just like a fun end of the year for me to stand back and say, wow, this is what we've done, and the kids are engaged, and they had a great day.
They were happy.
Other than that, I, like I said, I'm very proud of our efforts, so looking forward to this fall when we can share some more results.
Very good. Well, I'm sure the board feels the same as I do, and I speak for the board. I want to thank you for your accomplishments that you've done in twenty sixteen, and that we're looking forward to at least another four or five years, maybe more.
Ten.
Ten, yes. I didn't want to scare them, Angie, I didn't want to scare them. All right, I would like to start by saying I want to thank the board members, because each and every one of you gave up your time to come and do our first-time-ever ice cream social. And I think that a lot of people noticed that, and they were very happy. They actually saw smiles on your faces. I know some of you got your hands very dirty, but it was kind of a sweet dirty. And I personally want to thank you, because I know it's very hard of you, for, for you to give up your job and to come up for the school. But the, the faces on those kids serving the ice cream.
It was a lot of fun.
It was a lot of fun.
And when they lined up in front of the table, and they all hollered, thank you, that, that was kind of special.
Yes.
So it may, this may become a yearly event. The other thing is, we, we, in the past, never had a meeting in July. Is that all right with you, the board, if we continue that practice?
As long as there's nothing present.
Yeah, then you'd do a special meeting if you had to.
If something comes up. But I do believe, and I don't, I mean, correct me, Tammy, if I'm wrong, I don't think that we, a motion was made for the chair and, or vice chair to sign the warrants if there's no meeting. Was that ever done, do you think?
I'm not sure this year.
So just to, to cover things, would someone make a motion to that? Because when there's no meeting, either myself or Angie will have to go to central office and sign the warrants, because those, even though we don't have a meeting, the bills still have to be paid. So entertain a motion?
So moved.
To allow the chair and vice chair to sign.
I'll second.
Okay.
But Cindy, was it just to, to sign the warrants? Do you want the motion?
Yeah, I think that's all we do.
Do you have any job openings here? Do you need nominations?
We would. We have a sixth grade opening. The position was reposted last Friday. So the end of the posting is the twenty-fourth of June, and I believe the twenty-seventh, Monday, the twenty-seventh of June, we'll be interviewing. So we may have a candidate for July.
So you might want to extend it that you could sign their contract and, and then ratify it at the August meeting. Otherwise, we run the risk of losing, making, and they, they don't want to wait till August to see if we're going to offer them the job. That would be my only comment.
Extend that motion.
Okay, so to sign the warrants?
To sign the warrants in any.
Contracts.
Contracts, any to be signed.
We'll still bring the nomination form at the August meeting, but so that we can lock people in once Todd have, has a candidate.
Okay. So are there any, is there a motion? Is there a second? Okay, any questions? All those in favor, signify by raising your hand. Very good. The other thing I wanted to say is, anyone out there, I know, I want to say thank you to Tammy for trying to do two jobs here. She's been doing it now, and she's doing a wonderful job. I'm not trying to take your recording job away from you, but if there's someone out there that would like to meet with us, we are a very nice board. Once a month, and do the recording for us, we would really appreciate it. Please contact myself, or you can even call Tammy. So if you're looking for a night out, and it's really a fun night out, and it's quick, you know, and ask Jim, he's, he comes down because he likes our board. So I appreciate that.
Except that you'd rather Donna come than me, but.
No, we like you both. Okay, so that means our next board meeting will be the twentieth of July.
No, I thought we skipped July.
I'm sorry. See, Jim's got me all going here. The seventeenth of August, okay, at five-thirty, that would be our next board meeting. Unless there is an issue in July that requires a special meeting, then I will contact each and every.
Your flooring could come back, that you need the meeting.
Right.
I've got to apologize, in my little discussion with the transferring of the money from the capital fund to the general fund, I implied that there would have to be a transfer from the capital fund reserve line item in this year's budget to cover the capital expenditures. So if you could just add to that, the motion that the thirty thousand from the reserve line item will be moved up to the capital reserve expenditure line item to take care of the thirty thousand dollars, that would be great. That covers all.
Did you get that?
I think that's what we said in the beginning, wasn't it?
No, the, the first one was thirty thousand dollars, or ten thousand, or thirteen thousand from the general fund, or from the capital fund to the general fund. This one is moving thirty from within the fund to the capital fund, so there's no bottom-line difference. It just cleans up the transfers.
Hope you followed that, Tammy.
Well, Tammy's great. Tammy's great. One other thing I do believe that I can announce, I was on the ESP contract. We settled it. We settled it for one year. They started out wanting a three-and-a-half percent increase, and it, it ended up at a two percent for one year. Everything, the health stays the same, and we're going to start in August. We're coming right back and start with the next contract in August. So that was, that was a good thing, and it's, it was a very short and sweet, and nobody got, throwing things around. It was probably the best one. I've been on, I've been on five of them, so, I mean, this was the best. And I know it's only for a year, but due to the fact that there's such a convoluted health issue with insurance that.
Right.
There's just no way we could offer any more than one year. So I'm happy we ended it, and we're going to start in August for the next year. And anyone that would like to be on that, please let us know. We'll talk about it in August.
Do you know who on this committee will be doing the teacher negotiation? Have you appointed any, because I know that we're looking in August to do a.
To do, to start the teachers also?
Well, to do a joint meeting first on health insurance with both the power support negotiators and the teacher negotiators with our attorney, so.
I don't think we, I don't think we appointed.
Yeah, because it's early, because we normally wouldn't go to September, but the chair of the teacher negotiators asked if each committee would appoint someone sooner.
Than later. Is anyone interested in being on the teachers' list, Todd? That would be wonderful. You know, it's such an experience for you. That would be great. Yeah, we have.
Good, so we record that? That would be great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks to all, Karen.
All right, now for FYI, we have the budget status report, and we have the SVSU student enrollment. And if there's, is there any other business to come before the board? Yes, we do. I'm sorry, we're going to do a quick executive session. All right, but we're not going to be coming back out with any yays, nays, or anything, so if there's nothing else to come before the board, we may need a motion to move into executive session.
Make a motion for an executive session?
Second.
Okay.
If you have a reason, you should state the reason.
For personnel.
Personnel.
Personnel, yes.